Here he is.
I think that was back in the day.
We can check him off now.
Let's call the meeting to order.
You wouldn't say you didn't send it.
Jerry's here, so that officially begins the meeting.
All right, let's go.
Looks like everyone's accounted for. We have a couple of agenda items that I'd like to throw out to you as changes. The first one is under the personnel, leave of absence for bus driver for one year for his PM route. I would like to pull that off and let's call that its own action item. Let's call it A1, we'll put it down here. And it's for Bill Copeley for one year leave of absence for his PM route. And then the second one would be Mike Dalton has consented to be the Lantern advisor. So I would like to add that into the district-wide personnel items for Dalton to be our Lantern advisor. Does anyone else have any additions, changes, deletion? If not, I'd look for a motion to approve.
I'll make one.
On second, motion by Jerry.
On second.
Second and third.
Sorry.
Pat Beechey.
Oh, where was I?
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. If we seem to be in kind of a rush, there's at least some people here that deem the Packers to be an important entity.
This is gonna be the longest meeting on record.
And I feel a cold coming on.
Item four, the approval of the minutes for the August 27 meeting. Everyone had a chance to review those.
I'll make a motion to approve minutes.
On second.
Motion by Brenda. Second by Kurt. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Scheduled presenters. We some time ago asked for an ALC update, just to know where we are, where we're going, how things are going in general. Amy Dombek is here to give us that presentation, so take it away, Amy.
I took some liberties to make a PowerPoint. If you're in one of my classes, this is standard operating procedure in order for me to inform you about things. And you'll forgive me, I'm not used to having all of this technology, so I'm just gonna kinda hang out over here, whatever. So, thank you for inviting me to come. I really welcome the opportunity to talk with anybody about what we're doing down at Alternative Learning Center. I wish more people would ask about it, be curious about it, because there's been some really great things that are going on this year, the last few years, and I just, I am really excited to talk to you about that. So, I just wanna spend a little time talking about that. So, the Alternative Learning Centers are for students who want or need a change from the public school setting, and they're pretty much designed to help students who learn differently and who need just a different learning setting. A lot of people are curious, why would we even need, you know, this? And there's students that have different academic needs, different social needs, and something that's kinda come up here with, especially with credit recovery and things like that, are life events sometimes get in the way of them being successful during the regular school day, so it allows them to have some opportunity to succeed that way and still stay on track to graduate, which is an important thing. We have and continue to meet the needs of students here at Canaan Falls, and we can customize their learning for a variety of different reasons. Academic is the big one. Many of our students are recommended tests by the guidance office. They're down on credit, they're behind credits, and we actually offer kind of some customizable, I guess I would call them, learning options to help them stand track to graduate. Some are there for social reasons, and you'll see that later. The high school just doesn't feel good to them. They feel some social anxiety and just don't feel comfortable in that big setting. Medical reasons can also be a reason why someone would choose to come there. Maybe they had to take a leave from school for a while and are coming back, need to be on track to graduate. And then just personal preference, and I'll talk about that. We have some students who are down there for personal reasons, but how is it different from an ALP? Alternative learning programs take place during the school day, but ALPs cannot offer the kind of extra services that you would get, things like night school, summer school, credit recovery programs that help kids stay on track to graduate. And then also too, for kids who need some remediation for MCA, math and reading tests in the summertime, ALCs can do that where ALPs cannot. So, the need for the program is recognized by Beth Geis, she's been our probably biggest champion for the ALC, and appreciate that enthusiasm that's kind of led us to where we are today. Our first two years, we operated as an ALP and we've been an ALC ever since, and a lot of those first couple of years, it looked more like a traditional classroom, and as we've kind of gone along, we've been able to make some accommodations. But the biggest accommodation the first couple of years was it was just an alternative setting, and we slowed down the pace of the curriculum so that kids could be successful and continue to stay on track to graduate and meet those credits. We moved towards an online format three years ago to kind of build that customizable learning. So, I went back and did it in my head, 'cause I've been the only one that's been by there since the beginning. We've had over 16 different staff members from the Canaan Falls schools support us in the five years that we've been in existence, which is kind of crazy if you think about it. If the goal is to keep some continuity, you know, have kids kind of see the same face every year, that probably have not been as successful in, but to the kids' credit, they've been very good about, you know, adapting or whatever. And this has a flip side, it ends up allowing the ALC to help the high school keep staff full-time, and especially when staff would need to be cut in certain areas. Pretty much, we started every school year with about 12 students, this year we're starting with 24 students, which is a really great thing. But past struggles we've had is, what do we wanna offer students as far as an alternative? What do we need to offer students, and then what can we offer? And those kind of issues, like I said, with staff continuity, some years we'll have a science teacher, some years we won't. Some years we'll have an English teacher, some years we won't. We've had, I think, four, three or four different math teachers, and every year they've kind of reinvented the wheel and come up with their own thing, but not for lack of effort, that's for sure. So, it's kind of what's out there, what's available to us. And then the online program, I think, has probably been our biggest saving grace, 'cause it does allow us to customize learning for those students. Other struggles are cost and budget constraints. I mean, you know, we're trying to do everything on a shoestring budget, and the ALC is also in that boat as well. Public perception, I think, is also a big thing. I think people have a very negative view, and it doesn't matter if it's here, it's everywhere. Alternative schools do not have a good public perception. They think bad kids go there, kids who slack off, don't wanna work that hard, and that's not the case at all. I would say that, you'll see some data that kind of shows maybe the opposite of that. Student motivators are also, it's always been a big thing for us, what's the one thing that's gonna help get them back on track and keep them engaged and moving forward in learning. Past, and I would even say current successes, surviving the growing pains of creating a new program. And I put that in, shout out to Ann Thicke, she came in at just the right time, and she had some background information and knowledge that allowed us to move forward in a better place, and I think she's the tipping point to the ALC program and got us to where we are today. It provides opportunities to support all learners. We have students who have really low reading levels, we have students that have very high reading levels. I can actually customize a program for them, so it kind of meets those needs. And I think using the community center in a way that's viable, so we don't have empty classrooms, I think that's a good thing. I think it's good that, and I know it sounds kinda weird, that that toilet gets flushed on a regular basis and that, well, that drinking fountain gets used. That's actually a good thing for that building. Yeah, it's cost, but you don't have to worry about nobody knowing if the pipes broke the next day, somebody's always in there. And many past and current ALC students have said that this place feels like my school, like it's for me, and I think that's a big deal. And I did not know this, Tim reported this, and maybe he'd like to comment on that. A lot of big misconceptions, we have bad kids with discipline problems. We filed our state report last year to the Department of Ed, and we had zero disciplinary referrals, which are different from truancy issues, kids being absent versus, you know, kids using bad language or whatever. We had zero on our report last year, and the state actually kicked it back and questioned the validity of the report and wanted to know, how can an ALC not have disciplinary problems? And I think if you came down there at any point in time during the day, you would see, these are kids that are working, staying focused on task. They have their moments, but then again, don't we all? This year, there's 24 students at the ALC during the day, 14 are full-time, 10 are part-time. There's a couple of other students I'm working with, with Kirsten Hoffman, the guidance counselor, about maybe moving them at mid-quarter down there. Night school's a current roster of 14. In the past, we've always started with about six, so that's good too. Kids are getting it, but you need to get in and finish up that credit. And five students are brand-new to the district this year and chose to come to the ALC. When they were given that option right away, that was their primary choice. So, we have 25 new laptops, and I'm giving a shout-out to Tim Hodges for that one, because that has also changed everything at our program. The first few years, we didn't have computers, then we did have computers, and they just didn't operate very well for the high level of information coming across on these programs. They just would not run properly. Kids would get on question three on a quiz, and it would boot them out. And then they'd start up again, and they'd get to question six, and it would boot them out, and it was like pulling teeth to try and get them, to get rerouted and get back onto that work. So, infrastructure, we've just had some issues with some, with a new line down there. Supposed to be three times the bandwidth or something, and turns out there's all kinds of errors on it. That is being fixed, so we've had to struggle. We've probably had seven days this year where we've had either software, hardware updates, or something went on with the infrastructure that's kind of limited our ability to be able to keep kids on track. But they're still doing it. And this is what I, when I talk about a customizable learning plan, what it looks like. I actually go in and I can build a course for each, for any one of these, and we have probably 25, 30 different classes that we can do with the Odyssey program. I actually can have them do, like, there's some music appreciation stuff in there, which is kind of fun. They can learn about the music and art of Islam or Greece, or if they need to do a physical science credit recovery, I can go in and pick out the things that they need to do for that. And the kids open that up, and then they have a lesson, and someone speaks to them, they're lectured to. Like the kid, a student told me today, probably, they're my teacher, like, I'm not sharing them with 25 people, this person is kind of speaking to me. They go through, and then they're asked to take quizzes, chapter tests, and we ask them to complete that at a 70% accuracy rate. If they get lower than that, we can kind of negotiate with the 60% and up. 50% and up, I can give them some extra things to make up to try to get them to passing, but if anything is below 60%, I immediately go in and start, like, I kind of track it, and we kind of look, and we can reassign them quizzes to get them up to passing. So again, misperception, right? It's not rigorous, there aren't high expectations. No, there are high expectations, and we are actually asking you to perform at a 70% rate. So, a typical day involves students coming in and working on their Odyssey program for about three and a half hours. They take a math class for about 45 minutes, and Tyler Quinlan teaches that. They also take a music class during their fine arts credit. And then that one course they work on for four and a half weeks for three and a half hours, that actually gets them a semester's worth of credit. It's like hyper-focusing in on one class, when they keep their attention on it, work on that for the whole mid-quarter, I guess it would be, and at the end of mid-quarter, if they're getting a decent score, we give them credit. Some of the best dollars spent, I'll tell you, the ALC has actually been the music class. Joel Bryan does a phenomenal job with our music program. I know Riverside is jealous of our music program, and a lot of kids say it actually gets them refocused during the day to be on that, so. Kind of is not good. Sorry about that. Oh, good night. Okay. Well, I can finish that up if you want. I was hiding a couple pictures on there, so you can kind of see what that looks like. But kids basically come in at 8:00, sit down at a laptop, and they get to work. At 9:00, we have a 15-minute breakfast break. Instead of having passing times and things like that, students are actually given some time to kind of socialize and sit down, have conversations, breakfast. That's good for the school too. A number of them are on free reduced lunch, so that kind of can help with that as well. Then after that, then they have math, there's music, and then they continue to work or whatever for the rest of the time. You're also starting to focus more on MCA testing. That math piece is a bigger piece, where most of our kids struggle with math when it comes to that, and many of them have to pass that high-stakes test. Most of our students have to do that. Here, what do we switch over? This year's juniors, I think, are held to that higher standard. So, a good portion of our students now are gonna be held to that. We're also trying to meet reading and writing needs by changing the focus. Within each classes, I have biology readers that I have them doing, like in a biology class, or physical science readers that look like an MCA test, so that actually has been kind of a good thing too. Just a couple of comments that students have made, and I actually went and asked them, 'cause I told them I didn't want this to be like me coming up with quotes, but these are actual quotes from kids. "The ALC has been a gift. I don't feel out of place. I used to feel out of place at the high school." One student remarked, "ALC saved me from dropping out. It gives me hope that I can do okay after high school too." And one student, and this is very fascinating for me, 'cause if you would know who this is and where he was a couple of years ago, he says, "I was about to drop out at 16 until I heard about the ALC, but I'm still here, and I'm gonna graduate on time." So, that's been a good thing. And then about the night school program, I asked students about that. "I would have to take the same class over again with the teacher that failed me, and that would have been really uncomfortable for them, and I'd have to drive to Red Wing near Northfield, and I don't know if I would've gone if I would've had to make that trip." So, we have many reasons to celebrate what's going on at our ALC. We have kids staying in school, earning credits, they're graduating. We have low incidence of discipline problems, it's a safe environment, kids feel good about being there. And we're continuing to learn about what works best for our kids, and because of that, we're one of only a small handful of programs in Goodyear County that are actually growing in numbers, and that's actually a really good thing, 'cause many students find that they have to leave their community to go find alternative learning programs that'll help them be successful. So, it's great that we offer these services for our students. And the future always depends on weighing the cost versus the benefit. And there is a cost that's incurred by providing these services for students. We will continue to work, I'll continue to work with Beth and Tim about how to make it more efficient, more effective, and I'm always willing to look at that. But I wonder, what's the cost of not, what's the cost incurred to not provide these services? And many technical colleges and universities are actually requiring our students to take online classes now. It's actually, even there's hybrid, and so we're giving them kind of that little taste of what that looks like already at the ALC, so hopefully they can go on to technical, um, community colleges and be successful. And just a crazy statistic to leave you all with, is that 70% of all workers in Minnesota will need a post-secondary degree in order to be employable by the end of the decade. And high school graduation's the tipping point in that, and I think the ALC is the tipping point in that. And so, I'm very passionate about what we're doing down there, and I feel we have a lot of really great things that have gone on. We've learned from our past, and we're in a really great place now, and I hope to see that, and the school continue to invest in that in the future. Thank you.
Thanks.
I will go ahead and piggyback off of that and do the financials. I know Chair Brittenall had wanted you to kind of see some financials that go along with that. I think most of you, there's a couple new board members, remember when I begged and pleaded for the ALP to even start, and I think Todd Susker heard me, he heard my vision and where I wanted to go with that, and I still to this day really appreciate that he let me do that. It was so, something I needed to do for this community and these kids. And we opened the doors, I think, that first year with eight kiddos, and four of them dropped right away, and then we got other ones. It isn't, an ALC will never be a moneymaker, but people are coming to us to find out what we're doing. I have been down there with all the Goodyear County Ed District superintendents. I thought Tim did just a fabulous job of doing a tour, we had a great conversation down there, people are calling, you know, other districts are wondering, okay, we're gonna be shutting our doors, how can we get you here, and all those things. So we've obviously grown in numbers. I'm gonna pass out financials. I'm gonna just really quickly go through this, I know this is kind of what you wanted to see. There's a lot of question out there, what do we make? I think the big thing you need to remember is kind of what Amy talked about, is what would you lose if they leave? And I think the considerations down at the bottom that you really need to look at is 82 students are impacted by the ALC, and I want you to think about that before you look at the financials. We go through at the top, you know, we've got our administrative costs, Mr. Gisbeld is down there. I do code a very small percentage of Mr. Hodges' salary there as well. Subs are in there, because they have to be. Mr. Hodges says, you know, "We don't use those subs," so that's, but I want it to be in the budget in case we do need that. Mr. Quinlan is down there 35%. Mr. Bryan is down there 42%. Mr. Drucker is 42%. And obviously, you'll see more in social studies, but it's just because that's where Amy is coded to, she's down there a majority of her day. You know, you'll see like, oh, there's no English on here. Those are the type of things in the classes that she was talking about in her presentation. We don't need specific teachers with those specific licensures, because we're using the Odyssey programs and things like that. Also, something to note is that top number, the $63,000, is also your supplies. Odyssey programs aren't cheap, but we need those online programs for these kiddos. So that, the whole expense of $172,000. And as far as what we're making for revenue, this is actually really difficult to do, and Nora, I will get you a copy of this, so you have numbers. It's really kind of an ebb and flow of where kids are at. Some semesters, they're here full-time, and by full-time, I mean they're here till 1:00 and then come up and take classes here at the high school, so it's really hard to calculate. But Lori and I and Josh, we got it down today. An ADM, you're used to hearing that. What the W is in front of that is a weighted ADM, and these kids get us 1.3, 'cause they're high school students, but they're not there for their entire day, so it's weighted and it's a calculation. The 6230 that you see, times the 14.14 kids, is the number we get for every single kid in this district. Now, for example, if a referendum did pass, $500 would come off that number which we receive for kids, okay? So you'll see that revenue, the 6.7 is a lot of your miscellaneous students, the random .2's for evening classes, or, you know, Amy runs summer school and things like that, that's where that money is coming from. A different financial number, you don't get some of your aides that go along with that. The à la carte lunches are an additional thing, believe it or not, the kids love their milk and cheese sticks and cereal down there. All of those items are à la carte, we do get, you know, a lot of reimbursement for that, so that's $9,500 in there. So there's your revenue, and the difference being $44,000. If we, and you've heard me fight for this program every year, if we close the doors to the ALC, the loss would be close to $100,000, at least 80. I mean, they would have to go somewhere, they would have to be somewhere. So again, I think Amy said it very eloquently, where's your cost, where's your balance? We've got 95% of our kids graduating from the ALC. That's remarkable. People don't believe us when we say it. Our high school's always had just an amazing high graduation rate, but we have an ALC with 95%? That's just unheard of. People don't believe me when I tell them that. So, I can answer questions. I know you've never really had a financials for the ALC before. I think there's always been kind of a confusion of, it gets tricky, 'cause there might be a regular ed student up here that's using the Odyssey program, we code that to the ALC. So is this a true measure? I don't know. We've got kids that are in Tim's high school here that are benefiting from something that might be going on down there too. So it's kind of a, I code it to the ALC, like Tim said, I've never used a sub, you know, that subpay. Well, I want it in the budget, just in case. So, if you have any questions, I can go ahead and answer that now.
Beth, I think, just looking as well at what the cost on the building, expenses there, with the leasing that to Riverside, is anyone ever calculated what the cost of the building is for us? Because does that extend?
To do the chargebacks?
That lease actually pay for most of the building itself?
Oh, yeah, we charge them. I mean, it, we will have to renew that lease, and I would hope that we could get more for that building. What they're getting for Swerfeet is actually really low. I wasn't a part of that lease. They got a really great deal, and they know they got a really great deal. So, I don't know, that lease is like 10 years long though, isn't it?
Yeah. If you were to add that into Help Ops, that's $30,000 a year in lease.
Yep, they get 30, they pay us 30. But like again, you know, we could be asking for more, but they're happy with it, and they're great neighbors to the ALC. They're perfect.
They are wonderful. There's a lot of collaboration, they kind of look out for our students, we kind of look out for their students.
Extra supervision.
There's even some talk too about transitioning one of the Riverside students who is not coming to school, about maybe he doesn't wanna be part of the Riverside, or maybe you could come and try being at the ALC for an hour, 'cause he thinks he would like to be part of that, whatever.
Today, they agreed to let us use their grade can. I mean, Lee Gisbeld is gonna shuttle the kids up here so they get up to their seventh and eighth hour classes, things like that. It's just a great collaboration with them. Any other questions?
Have we stabilized the staff down there for the last couple of years, for the most part? We're always gonna have a few...
We have, we're a little higher than, you're right in saying, we're a little higher than we have been in the past, and we're also hiring students. It gets really difficult to staff. I think Tim has just done a remarkable job, you know, looking at what we need and staffing accordingly.
I guess my question is more, are the kids seeing year after year more the same faces?
It's, no, it's been very transient. I mean, I'm hoping that we can continue to keep that the same, but it really is what Tim needs and what the ALC needs, and then they try to mesh it as well as they can.
We're pretty close this year. Last year, Brett Zimmerman, if you replaced Matt Drucker with Brett Zimmerman, and that was just because this year, I had a number of requests to take our classes at high school. And in the sciences, there were fewer, so Mr. Bennett, it's kind of a long, kind of luded path to get there, but Mr. Bennett took the physics class that Mr. Clicka had been teaching, which left an opening for Mr. Drucker, and without having Brett there, I was gonna be a little bit short in staffing. So, by transferring Matt down there, it's a win for the ALC, because they get a science instructor again. It's a win for me, because I don't have to try to figure out something for somebody to do for an extra hour, and I think it's kind of good all around. So we're pretty close to what we were last year as far as staffing, and as far as number of FTE in staffing, I think we're, I think we're the same as what we were last year. So, and we've tried to, you know, kind of our goal in staffing is to make sure that there are two people there at all times, and it doesn't quite work out that way, use their by yourself for the last hour, I believe, this year.
It's okay. It's okay. Before lunch?
You know, when we do that, just, you know, just as common sense, it makes sense. We've got two classrooms, you know, we've got students in both rooms, we need to...
But for the most part...
Amy can't stand in the doorway and supervise both rooms, but for the most part, we're pretty close.
It's pretty mainstay with U2 down there and...
Yeah. And I've been there since the beginning, so right now, I graduated last year, my first student that was there in the ninth grade, and then went all the way through in the ALC. And then this year, again, same students, they pretty much knew me the whole time that they've been down there. So that, if nothing else, that's a positive, 'cause they see at least one face that they recognize every year. And it's, it's all about relationships with the students. It's really, really important.
Same. Thank you.
I'd like to say, I think it's really good, the exposure to the online learning environment, because a lot of colleges do have hybrid classes, online classes, and even offer degree programs that way, and that, having experience with that is really good for students.
Well, I myself would just like to thank the board, past and present, for staying, hanging in there, because, boy, when we started this thing five years ago, my phone did not stop ringing, and we had a lot of upset people. And my comeback was, you know, eventually, a $44,000 investment is gonna look minimal when considering what we're going to be doing for the students. And, you know, we have sports budgets, and we have a lot of different budgets we spend money on to give the kids opportunities, and I always thought that this money would be well-spent, because the last thing we needed to do is lose the kids through the cracks and send them off to other towns to get educated, you know? It's not the same world that we all grew up in, where it's, you know, tough it out, rough it up, tough it out, you know, mind your p's and q's and go sit down. World's changed, you know? So, I'm really glad that, like I said, the task board, you know, stuck to their guns, and the current board has stood by, stood by the program down there too, 'cause it's definitely paying off, definitely.
I kind of, just, what are all the different ways, I went through guidance counselor, you can, it's recommended, what are all the different ways that kids can go down there?
Turn that over to Tim.
You know, I really rely on Kirsten a lot and Amy too. I mean, they're very good about child find, going out and finding kids that would be successful at the ALC. that would be successful at the ALC. We have kids that, quite frankly, I recommend that they don't go to the ALC because although it is an alternative placement for, especially for a lot of kids who haven't been successful at the high school in a traditional setting, kids really have to kind of be self-motivated to get through the online portion of the class because if they just go down there thinking that it's going to be a blow-off time, then I've told kids, you know, you're going to get even farther behind than you are right now because if you blow it off, there's not really anybody there. That little online guy doing the lecture is not going to say, hey, you need to start paying attention. So we have kids that I've recommended not go because I just didn't think that they'd be successful in that setting. So it's kind of the three of us and then, and then teachers. And I think, I think our ALC is starting to, to have a reputation in the surrounding areas. As far as being successful, we've had people, like Beth said, the area superintendents have come on to look at things. Amy and I met with Dan Cashman, who's the head of Tower View and Red Wing. And Dan has been asked to kind of look at alternative programs and the whole Good Hugh County Ed District and see what kind of collaboration we can do. And we had a really good talk about some areas that are potential for us to grow and areas that he could see Tower View growing. So, you know, I think that our reputation is starting to be one that people are starting to look to as a successful program. And it was really interesting when Robin told me that the state wouldn't accept our discipline. And when she said, because we didn't, I was like, it's perfect for me.
Can I ask a follow-up to Kirsten Hoffman again, who actually goes out and finds students too who have been out of school for a year, maybe two? We just had our first two students, actually we got one student this year who's been out of school for two years and is coming back to finish up. We had another student who came back after being out for two and a half years and finished up last year and graduated and went through Samholt and everything. So that is also a really, that's a bonus when kids make that kind of leave. And that takes a lot of courage, you gotta, you know, to come and hang out with teenagers again when you're twenty years old to come, but it's, it's kind of really positive.
And just, I, I remember when we were first talking about it and they were talking about, well, kids are going up to Rochester, or they're going up to Rosemont, but they're also going to The Rock. And I went, The Rock? Isn't that what Alcatraz, wasn't that Alcatraz, Chris? How can a kid want to go, I think I want to go to The Rock?
I just, I remember, I remember a number of years ago when we were writing checks out to decals in excess of a hundred thousand dollars, and that's a conservative number. And that doesn't seem to factor into this, but it does in my book because that's where those kids are going if they don't stay here.
Yes, so minimal.
And the other one was the first year we had a young lady who came in and gave us a presentation. And she was, she essentially said, I'm the first one in my family to graduate from high school. And had it not been for them, I wouldn't have graduated. So from a financial and an emotional standpoint, it's a good thing for us.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Moving along, we'll jump down to the finance report.
The, the, be there in your agenda. First page starts with the cash flow worksheet and then just a couple of items of, I know, I haven't cleared the spreadsheet yet, so that top exhumers outstanding homes of one point, point two million, that's no longer there. I made the payment on Friday to pay off the anticipation certificates. So you see that top number, outstanding checks, one point five million dollars. That's inclusive of that anticipation repayment payment. The one point three five million you see there for revenue, that's ideas, usually the August thirtieth and September thirtieth are kind of cleanup payments from the last fiscal year. So that's why that's a little bit larger. As we go through here, everyone got through about mid-December, I see that cash flow stays positive and that's without any borrowing, all of our own cash now. However, once we do make the debt service payments at the end of January, a little negative for cash again because we'll get to that situation where we're floating our cash with the debt service. And once we make the debt service payment, then general fund is negative. So I have to go off for anticipation borrowing again, and we'll probably talk about that more in the October board meeting. Get things going with that. Next page is going to be just the summary of cash flow for the last month reconciled, and that is August two thousand twelve. So you will see that we still have the anticipation loan outstanding there at the end of August. When we come back and do this next month for September, that'll be wiped out. One thing to note is that this is for August two thousand twelve, it's pre-audit. We've been going through the process of doing the audit. They were in the office last week, still have some things to clean up, so there'll be some things to flush out yet. The total value of cap won't change, but within funds will change maybe slightly as we do some adjusting. So they're not going to be totally accurate numbers, but in general, right now you're seeing the general fund about two hundred thousand dollars ahead of where we were at this point last year, although both funds, if you were to take out the anticipation borrowing, were negative for cash in the general fund. Food service about twenty-five thousand dollars in net of last year, community debt about eighty thousand. A real big reason for that is the tax shift. Last year it had a much larger impact on the community debt, shifted about seventy-five thousand dollars out. And same sort of deal this year, but because the previous year wasn't, was as large as it was, the net effect really kind of washed itself out. So it takes away some kind of back to what it was before that first tax shift. Building construction, that's done now, we've got that down to zero. Debt services fund seven, about a hundred fifty thousand dollars behind where we were at this point last year. We made a manual adjustment last year in the levy to reduce it by two hundred thousand dollars to help kind of keep the overall impact to taxpayers at a minimum. And we had enough within our debt service fund to be able to do that. Trust and agency, there's scholarships, about five thousand ahead of where we were at this point last year. A couple of new donors to offer scholarships. That's really kind of acts as an in and out account. The OPEB trust, you'll see a dispersion of a hundred twenty-six thousand dollars. That's for the contribution towards FY twelve retiree benefits to help kind of offset some of those. And then the OPEB debt services, roughly about the same as what it was at this point last year. Again, that's just the debt service on that OPEB. The next couple pages are just going to be the deep stuff. You kind of want to see what goes in and out on a monthly basis. The kind of big things to note in the general fund, you see about one point nine million in receipts for twelve versus about one point five, one point six million in two thousand eleven. Hundred point six thousand, that is the OPEB transfer from the OPEB fund into the general fund to help offset some of the retirees. The cash is received in fiscal year thirteen, but it's recognized as fiscal year twelve. So that's not those adjustments I mean the audit. Doesn't affect cash at all strictly on the balance sheet side, but that's part of the difference. And then also about a hundred fifty thousand dollars extra in ideas for August twelve versus August eleven. Next one is food service, a little more activity in two thousand twelve versus eleven. We had commodity shipment come in for beef that just had to be paid in August. And for the most part, it'll take care of most of the needs throughout the year, but we didn't have that last year. The shipment came in August of this year. So sometimes it's just a matter of time if the payments come in, receipts will. Likewise, you'll see in the community debt service, about fifteen thousand behind in receipts for twelve versus eleven. And again, that's, when you look in ideas, it's the time when the revenue comes in from that state. Sometimes real consistent, they always hit the same August fifteenth or September fifteenth. Sometimes it's a payment late. Another really kind of last thing to note is that OPEB trust fund on the last page is a fund point five that's credit of a hundred point six thousand dollars. And again, that's just the transfer of funds from the OPEB debt server, or the OPEB trust fund into the general fund to help offset retiree benefits. And that is kind of a function of our actuarial study. When we went up for the OPEB bond, the million dollar bond, the idea was to try to make it last ten years. And you have to have an actuarial study in order to do that. We have to redone every three years. We just have one completed now. But essentially it takes the kind of implicit and the subsidized rate for retirees, it gives you kind of a magical number. We've kind of, finance media said it will take half that each year to help offset retiree benefits. It was a hundred twenty-six thousand dollars this last year. When we go to do our actuarial study, it's probably more like a hundred thousand that will go through off from OPEB into general fund next year. If you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer you.
I'll make a motion to approve the expenditures. Your finance report? Question by Pat. Seconded by Rob. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Since there's no old business, we'll jump down to new business. Under consent agenda, you have the attachments presented. And again, we have, we struck that one with the leave of absence to be dealt with and we added Dalton onto there. I'll make a motion. Motion by Jerry to approve the consent agenda, seconded by Pat. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Item A1, which is the one that we pulled off, Bill Copley, one-year leave of absence for his PM route. You know, while I was looking through personnel, I noticed the leave of absence. And I'm not sure that we've ever had leave of absence for anyone other than our educators, a contractual leave of absence. So I was just kind of struck by it. And I guess for, for reasons of conversation, I thought we should at least discuss it. I know it's a laudable thing to do for the district, but I believe that once we get started with leaves of absence for employees, that could more fall into something that's, I wouldn't say uncontrollable from the district, but it could, it could happen on a continuing basis. So I think we're setting precedence by allowing it. But at the same time, it's a, it's a conversation that I think we should have. Rob, you and I talked real briefly since you're the other transportation liaison.
Right. And we had a situation that came up, I guess it was earlier in the month, where someone else was asking for afternoons off as well. And it's something I think, like we're saying, we're setting precedence if they're not educators. If you're hired, you do the job, we want you to do the job, period. And I agree, I think Beth, you, we've talked about this briefly. It makes the most sense. It really does. It keeps it clean. If you're employed, we want you to do the job.
I guess I'm confused as to what are we, what are we saying here?
We're not allowing leave of absences for like a PM route or an AM route.
Okay.
For extended periods of time, like for the rest of the year. Right now, the only leave of absences we're allowing are for education, educators.
Anything in the contract?
No.
Nothing?
They would have to submit a leave like they're doing now. This is different than a medical leave. This is someone wanting to.
This is a personal leave of absence here. Okay. And for how long?
For the whole year.
Okay.
Well, yeah, I, I'm, you know me, I'm one for sticking with the contract. I mean, if there's no language in there that says it's approved, I agree with you guys. You know, once you, once you do open that door, you're going to get a lot more of it coming in. You know, when it comes to the educators, that's, that's a built-in, that's a built-in thing in, on their deal. But again, you know, once you, once you open that door for one, you're going to, you're going to eventually have more that are looking at that, you know? So I would be in agreement that this should probably not be allowed.
Has this taken place in the past, that this was allowed?
I did not approve any last year. We did, we had some paras and things that wanted an extended leave and I denied those. We did have two bus drivers last year that did, they go south for the winter and they were gone for a little over a month. Those were approved. We'll have to reevaluate those. Again, those come to me because they're short-term. This is a long-term, so it's a little bit different. But even the short-terms, I've denied almost all of those simply because it, it's hard on the kids and the, you know, the continuity. We want them to know the routes. If it's a para, we want them to know the child and their disability perhaps, or there's a lot of reasons, like Rob was saying, that we want our employees to be here. And, you know, really, especially in the transportation department, something that a lot of people don't think about is, you know, they all need to be renewed for training. So instead of, I have eight routes, instead of eight drivers, I now have all these part-time people that need to be trained. So instead of training eight drivers at six hundred dollars a pop, I now need to train, exaggeration here, but sixteen, because they want either a morning route or an afternoon route. It can, the more employees you have, the more expense there is to that too. So me putting on the financial hat like we always do, it can get expensive to have a lot of different people too.
My guess is this is a long-term driver for us, and he's been driving AM and PM both for a number of years. And, you know, when we talk in finance committees or in the transportation committees, they're always concerned about their seniority. So I, does this affect seniority by just going to PM or AM?
It doesn't. It, they would stay the same. And that's where some people in that department might get upset because they're reducing their only half-time, but, you know, maybe one of the most senior drivers. But this would not impact their seniority.
Well, what's your, what do you think, Jerry?
Well, that whole seniority thing down there confuses the heck out of me. I've never worked anywhere where if you're part-time and you're, you have two people, one full-time, one part-time, and the part-time gets, ends, could end up with more seniority than a full-time person to select route, confuses me. Full-time should get the priority, part-time should come after that. But that's their contract thing, that's their whole deal. Beth already addressed one of the things I was going to bring up, which I'm totally fine with, at case by case. But if, if they would stay, stay same and allow the one-year leave of absence, I would say they should have to freeze their seniority, but that probably isn't going to happen because of their contract.
Is this driver asking to go from full-time AM and PM to PM only, or I'm not clear on that?
AM only, and then just for this year, next year go back to full-time.
Have the right.
So still be driving the AM route?
Have the right to go back.
You would still be driving the AM route?
And, and just so you know, we have three open routes right now without drivers. We have Lee Gisbeld driving a noon route to the ALC. Lori has driven people home in vans. I am driving people home in vans. We are extremely short on drivers. Just going to say my piece on that. We're really short right now, so.
So if this were denied, then what would it be? Possibly that person would go part-time and for the year.
I think if you, if this, if the board decided to deny it, they would have to decide employment in Cannon Falls full-time or not work for Cannon Falls schools if you deny it.
Then you could come on as a sub.
Sure. I, I don't know what this employee would do.
You're saying if we deny this leave of absence for PM?
He would have to stay full-time.
Could we allow him to go part-time but not guarantee the leave of absence for the PM route?
Yeah, he could, he could resign his afternoon course.
Oh, right. That's, I guess that's what I was saying too, that you can't, you can't get it back.
With no guarantees, there would be anything.
If somebody wants that route, AM and PM, they get the route first.
Anyone can resign from a, from a route.
Well, that's not true though.
So you're not guaranteed.
That depends on their seniority. See, that's what, that whole transportation industry really makes me confused.
So it would be guaranteeing that he could have PM route back again next year? That would just be.
I mean, with the discussion we're having, I mean, there are so many shades of gray. You know, today it's just the PM and then I want Monday PM, Monday AM's gone, so I'm just driving Tuesday through Friday AMs. And, I mean, he could change.
My top four senior people, the top three of them are part-time. That's the truth. The top senior is full-time and then it's three half-time people.
And I think we've talked, I mean, it's their contract and it's how they brought it up, but it is very confusing, very, for not only us, but I think for a lot of them as well.
Yeah. I think, for me, the real issue is, are we going to begin the process of leave of absence for other than our certified?
Yeah, I don't begin set precedents like that. Plus it is financial. I mean, it could have a burden financially. It's not responsible.
For this big year, all of a sudden you have to train new drivers because we are short because we've allowed. Someone else comes up, wants the leave of absence, you gotta train another driver.
CPR costs us $50, and I mean, it's-
I'm, I'm gonna call this, I'm gonna call this, make a motion that we deny, deny this action to give a leave of absence for that, the after, or the leave of absence that he is requesting.
Can I add to that?
Yes.
With his option to resign, he'll keep his part-time, so he doesn't completely lose his employment at Cannon Falls Schools.
Unless someone else comes in.
I mean, you could always put, I guess I'm not sure how we should- I don't think that hurts at all to add that.
No, he's already got that option, so we don't have to add that to any motion. At this point in time, I'm just gonna make a motion that we deny his request for his extended leave of absence.
I'll second that.
Motion by Pat, seconded by Kurt. Yeah, we have a whole nother conversation piece about contracts and interpretation sometime. Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Thank you for the discussion.
Pat, we could discuss this for a couple hours, probably.
It is Packer night. We should get into contracts.
Yeah, we could keep going on this one.
Item B, approval of the expenditures for August and September.
Yeah, I got one on copying machines. Don't kick me out, don't kick me out. Pass it over here.
Are you doing this just for the same?
For 37815, dial copiers. It says copier repair and maintenance. Do we own that copying machine, or are we leasing that?
They came in before the school year started, just to look through all the machines, make sure they're in order. So it's partly to go through the machine, check them all, part of it is for toner, supplies, staples, whatnot.
So are we leasing that machine?
The machines that they're looking at, we do these, some of them are off lease, there are a couple that still remain on these, but if you're talking about the CIP lease, that one's gone.
Okay, this is one they're, so the billing is going out for the, they're charging us on maintenance, repair of something that we own. Correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Can I add about 37818? The Language Arts Books, is that for, what's that?
That's just our, we, K through three get workbooks and things like that. Those soft books. Maybe K two, K three. It's Darratt's building.
I have no idea.
I promise you, it's their workbooks.
That's a site license, but can you explain what that's for?
Linda Snacks?
Linda Snacks, it's a technology site license. I'm not sure exactly which site it involves. A lot, it's a renewal of subscription I've had in the past. I don't think it allows her to get into much of like, like, computer type sites, to allow employees for, but it's a subscription renewal for a site license.
It allows us not to have those big encyclopedias, it's all online.
I was looking at 37930, monitors.
Computers and monitors. Minnesota Computers for Schools, I think it ended up being roughly about 50, 55 computers and monitors that they get, roughly decent price. Usually more for our technology, through Marco, this is the rate of price for us.
Okay. Where'd they go, up here at high school?
They, we replaced the computers in the T-Lab, the high school lab, and monitor, I don't know where all the monitors were replaced, but basically we got two labs of computers for a price of one.
Okay, thanks.
Linda's stated budget.
What's that?
Linda's stated budget.
Linda's stated budget. On page 14, there's at least three or four storm-related. I'm gonna shoot this at Dave. Those are all things will be eventually compensated for through the FEMA system. Good to hear. That's a lot of money.
Fire mitigation, private going through, it all gets approved and stuff, that will be covered 100%. One bit, I'm sorry, on.
I'll make a motion. Jerry motions to approve the expenditures for these two months.
I'll second.
Seconded by Brenda. Further discussion? Rob?
Just one more. 37989, over at Door Company, inspection test, $1,000 for a roll-up garage door. Which doors?
Yeah, all the fire doors, the roll-up doors at high school and elementary, like the kitchen here, it's got like four or five of them. We got three of them at elementary school. It's annual inspection. We have one garage door that holds.
Perfect. And then could I go one more to David? It's 37967, the Franken signs. That's for the, right outside the fieldhouse here.
Yeah, that's the lighted sign that's out by the fieldhouse now, and the letters that are above the main entryway, and the letters above this entryway, and then all the letters that are on all the doors on each building. It looks good over by the fieldhouse.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and ending discussion. All in favor of the expenditure approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Next page, approval to post and hire for a transportation coordinator. Pat?
Just as the, it says, we'd like to go ahead and post for that position, and be able to interview soon.
I make a motion.
Motion by Rob, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Pat. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Approval of the sports participation fees for other schools. I don't see an attachment, so it's-
Yeah, it was discussion last time for you guys to talk about, and then I had Jake
prepare kind of something tonight, so you have costs in front of you, but we'd like to know where you wanna go with that. We've had a lot of discussion, I've talked to a lot of superintendents in the area, and I think we'll turn it over to Jake here.
As we talked about in the last meeting, we've got a few students who'd like to play sports, like hockey, skiing, stuff we can't offer here at other areas of schools, so far just Northfield. But what happens is, we're asking them to pay our activity fee, and when they go to the other school, they compete the season, and when the season's over, that school, say Northfield, will turn around and charge us a percentage of what their overall cost for that sport was. So if we have one student in swimming, and there's 25 people on the swimming team, they'll charge us 1/25 of the total swimming costs, when the parents are only paying our activity fee. So I asked him, I pretty much gave him an estimate on what it would cost us for one person on the swimming team, and he was pretty confident it'd be somewhere right around $465 that would turn around and charge us, while we're charging the student $125. So that's kinda where we're at. We had talked about maybe keeping it at 125 for the student, or passing that cost on to the family as well, that the school's gonna turn around and charge us. Obviously, we want our people, our students to stay here and be able to participate in sports other places, but it's also quite the expense for the school.
What do you, what would you estimate the school expense to be in all sports, for example?
That was the only, that was the only estimate he gave, it was $465 for the swim team. Josh and I have talked a little bit about what our sports would cost if we were to do this to somebody else.
For us, it varies. A high participant sport, or one that generates more revenue, might be about 175 bucks per kid, which, that would include the fee that they're collecting, 125, so probably about $300 per student, maybe play a low-cost sport, versus one may have a few participants and maybe lots of travel, no revenue, maybe about $750, and you take out that fee, it's probably about $875 to subsidize a kid. So we already subsidized a camp kid already for the activities they play here, which essentially would do with, say, if a kid went to Northfield to swim, we'd be subsidizing their ability to do the swim. School will bill us, I'm not sure if it's, you know, kind of nice to go back and forth, I don't know. But in a, kind of nutshell, we do subsidize our kids every, so if a kid's gonna go swim in Northfield, we technically can do the same thing for that.
If we have three kids in the family, they're gonna spend a grand?
Yeah.
But if they were going to Northfield, that's what they would pay.
Right. Now, how many kids come here? I kind of have a picture of roughly-
You know, we cooperate, track, wrestling, cross-country, golf, once in a while we can get some over, one or two for a fourth, I'm just saying, it's one of my experiences. And we only charge our activity fee, we don't pass that cost on to other schools. That's how we're doing it.
They have to pay, or if not, they're at graduate school.
So we're not going back and charging them for a percentage of whatever?
No, we're not.
Well, it seems like a good compromise might be to have them pay the activity fee that the other school would charge, not charge us, but their regular activity fee for that, like whatever Northfield charges, Northfield students for swimming, and I don't know what that is, but it would seem fair that our students would pay that to go-
Even if it's less than our $125.
Oh, no.
So does that mean other districts then charge back to us if any of our kids go to their districts? I'm not afraid of Northfield, but if we were Red Wing?
Yeah, some schools won't co-op because it changes their classifications, or the only one we're doing like this, Northfield, right now, can't co-op.
Do we know what they charge for swimming?
I might find that out. I'm sure it's not $465 a school, that cost.
So yeah, there are schools that won't co-op, we co-op, we don't charge them.
But they can't. It isn't that they don't want to, it's a discussion that came in Red Wing. If we, if they co-op even one student with us, they have to count us as 1,200. We have 1,200 students here, we move them into a new class. When you co-op, another great example is Casson-Mannerville. They'll take our hockey kids, because they already take all the other students, so they're as high of a class as they can go for hockey. So our kids could go to a school like that and not impact their numbers. So even if they take one of our students, they have to add on to over 100.
So Red Wing goes from like a three to four?
A double A. Right. It moves their classification, and that's why a lot of schools just won't co-op, because they can't handle the extra 1,200 students.
And some just won't. Lee and I looked into co-op, or trying to find a partner to co-op hockey last year, and everywhere we go, it was like, nope, nope, nope.
Currently, I was looking for a school to co-op hockey, and I came to Casson.
iPhone Casson?
Casson will take us, but otherwise, Northfield, Red Wing, and Red Wing will all start more hockey, because it'll move them all in class. Essentially, it turns into Cannon Falls, and they, you count all the students from the whole school.
So I know we got, we got one, one that does alpine skiing.
Oh, we have two.
We have two that do alpine skiing. Last year, we had, the last two or three years, we've had a gymnast.
Yeah.
Do we actually have a swimmer?
We do have one student who really wants to swim for Northfield this year.
Okay, so, so anybody else?
One hockey fan, like I'm trying to say, we'll co-op.
Well, but at this point in time, what we're looking at, as of, as of last year, we probably had four kids going over to Northfield for a sport. We were charging 125 apiece, right?
Actually, 95 last year.
Okay, 95. Let's go with the same scenario this year, so we're getting $500 revenue, paying our fees, and then what would, what would you estimate the four kids going to Northfield that's costing us as a district?
400 bucks, $400 apiece, I would guess.
Okay, outside of what we're taking in from them? Or, well, we're getting, we're gonna be getting 125, is it 400 total? So minus the 125?
Gymnastics was 700 something, but we don't have a gymnast anymore.
And the alpine skiing was a little-
Yeah, alpine was 648.
I would say we paid almost $1,000 for the-
I guess where I'm going with this is, is this, is this almost, at this point in time, a non-issue with four kids?
Here's the issue that-
That's where I'm going with it. It, do we, does this, do we really need to worry about it if our total costs, after everything said and done, is $600, $700 a year, but yet we're still?
The parents that are sending their kids to Northfield, two of them have been in and said, "Why are you not charging me? I don't want the school to eat this. I wanna, can I donate money? What can I do?" When they found out what it's costing the school, so, this only came up because a parent is pressuring Jake and I, my kid should not be costing the district more. The parents themselves are, everyone's being so fiscally responsible, now it might sound small, but this parent is saying, "Why, why wouldn't you charge me what it's gonna cost the school?"
And that'd be my concern, is if we wouldn't approve it, just keep it the way it is, those parents saying, "Well, I'll just pull the kids from the school and go over there." Now we're losing kid revenue for our district.
Remember, they gotta sit for a year if they do that, too.
But, but see, that, that makes no sense to me, because-
It doesn't to me either, but-
But that makes no sense to me, because right now, right now, they're playing a sport over there for 120, 95 a year, 125 a year, and, and if they were actually to pull their kids out and send them over there, they're gonna be paying $500 a kid.
I don't know that. The school eats that extra cost, just like, play basketball here costs more than $125 after the coach's fee, the transportation, tournament fee, stuff like that. So the school eats that cost, but Northfield is turning that cost over to us, so they don't need it.
See, I think this is more of a, and we're not dragging it out for-
No, no, that's fine.
You're shaking the script, I know. But, I mean, are we setting more of a, a new direction? Are we gonna set precedents like Red Wing? We setting it like the other schools that say, "We're just not gonna do this anymore." So it's not just this year, or these children, it's what we as a district aren't gonna do, and that's what a lot of the districts are doing, and we're just one of the last districts that hasn't changed yet. Maybe it's time we do change that.
I agree. I think as a district, we are able to support the sports that we have here, and anything outside of our district that we as taxpayers pay for, if they need to go someplace and pay for that themselves, that's our choice.
Next year, you get 10 kids that wanna go for some sport somewhere, and they're allowed. Now it hits the board again, and I guess to me, that would almost look bad. If, because it's so much money, now we're gonna make a different, we're gonna change the policy. I'd rather just do it now and know that that's the way we'd wanna go forward as a district. That's my thoughts.
You made a good point here.
Yes, these, these seem like some of them are expensive sports, so it'd be good to know what the other schools are charging their own students for these sports. Is it 125, or do they charge more for, by the sport?
If you get up to a place like Lakeville, I mean, my gosh, it's hundreds and hundreds of dollars. I don't know what Northfield is, I don't think it's that high in Northfield.
I would, if it's 300, then, you know, that's-
So then what we, what we would be approving then is just, we would approve, we would be approving the fact that the, that if a student from here decides to go to a Northfield or Red Wing or Hastings, or wherever they decide to go for their chosen sport, that they will pay us the participation fee that we would have, and then they would be responsible to make up the difference when they get to this, whatever the sport they choose. I'm a little confused on that.
I mean, that's what you wanna do.
Who transports those kids?
Their parents.
So my question then would be, why would we charge them 125 bucks for-
For their participation?
Participation fee. We shouldn't be charging them for their participation.
They would just pay the Northfield.
They just pay the Northfield.
Is that where you're going with that, Jake?
Yeah, because we don't, it's not an action item here.
I was like, looking for directions from you guys, I mean, basketball, you know, the basketball player here costs more than $125, it costs the school more than $125 to pull, you know, for that student to play, for that student, the family pays. After a coach's salary, all the bus transportation for the whole winter, workers at games, stuff like that, it's gonna cost the school more than $125, but the school eats it. And that's what Northfield does, except they're just charging back that one person, that 125th or 120th, whatever number people are on the team.
Well, then if the action item is, is that if a student decides to opt out into another district's athletic or extracurricular activity, he or she then pays that fee that that school wants to charge them, and we're not, and we don't charge them for that, for that.
I'd better agree with that.
I mean, if that's what it is, like I said, it is an action item on here without any real clarification of what we're moving.
Right, are we voting down what we're presently doing now? If we were to vote this down, are we saying we do not approve the sports participation fees for other schools?
I know what I wanna do, but I'm not sure if the motion matches it.
You can, make your own words, make that motion. It is that you're gonna charge the family what the actual cost from the other district is.
But are we charging this? I guess, I would say, you know, a motion to, if students want to attend other districts for sports, that family pays, and Cannon Falls District is not involved.
Then, just like, I would make a motion that the district no longer pays for participatory fees to other schools, sports.
Right.
Will that work?
However you wanna put it.
I think where the confusion was, last year, the student would pay 125, the family paid it 95 bucks, or whatever it was, for their child to participate. Then the district would pick up the other costs. That's why I, my point was, if they're gonna pick up the cost, then why are we charging them?
So Rob, did you make that motion?
Very lengthy, I can remember.
Did your motion mean where you're paying the Northfield activity fee?
The district's-
Or, right. Is the participant paying the co-op school's fee, or are they paying the entire bill?
They're paying the prevailing rate that the school is charging.
Whatever the school charges.
And we're not charging, and the caveat is, we're not charging our students to go there.
We're not charging our students, but we're not, we're not accumulating any costs as a district for these children to like-
We're talking really different things then.
No, when you say the co-op, the co-op school's fee, Beth, do you mean what they No, when you say the co-op, the co-op school's fee, Beth, do you mean what they charge their students, their activity fee?
Right. Do you want them to pay the Northfield fee, or do you want them to pay the Northfield bill? Do you want them to pay, do you want them to pay six hundred and sixty-two dollars, or do you want them to pay the two hundred dollar Northfield fee, or do you want them to pay the one twenty-five Cannon Falls fee?
But do we control any of that? We control a hundred and twenty-five dollar Cannon, but what Northfield's gonna charge them, do we have any input or say into that at all?
No. No, it's a percentage of the total cost.
I'd like to see them pay the Northfield activity fee and school subsidize the difference.
So maybe, so maybe Bob might have just hit on the catchphrase, that Cannon Falls School District will not assist in any, will not give financial assistance in any ways for a kid to co-op to another, co-op out to another school and athletics.
I'm sure.
Someone make a motion here that we can all understand and we'll move along. I'll make a motion that the district pays no activity fees outside our district. That sum it up?
No sports participation fees. No sports participation fees.
So essentially, Northfield's one hundred and twenty-five dollars, whatever their sport fee is, or the total cost.
The total cost.
So not the activity fee.
Well, what is that?
The cost for participation.
That would increase the fee then?
The cost for participation. Whether it's their fee or the whole shoot and match.
Cannon Falls, zero dollar.
Yep, and that was your intention, right?
Right.
Okay.
But I think since we subsidize, we subsidize activities here, that it'd be okay to subsidize part of that fee, but not...
Then you should vote.
Yeah, move against...
I'm gonna vote no.
Okay.
Wait, we gotta wait a second.
Let's get finished. We have a motion by Kurt.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Rob. Further discussion?
I'll say.
I already said it three times.
Lori, do you have that intended motion down?
Maybe four.
Do you wanna read it back to us, or tell us how you...
Okay. What we're looking for, we have a motion to second, the discussion is over. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
That passes by a four to two vote. With Brenda and Pat saying no. Okay, moving down, thank you. Good conversation. Confusing, but good. Approval of the principal and teacher evaluation system as required by legislation, attachment app.
As you're all well aware, this has become very, very big in the area of education. We need to come up with a principal and a teacher evaluation system. We wanna go along with what SSC is doing. You've got the email here. We are signed up currently for October twenty-second, looking at moving that to October thirty-first. This email is old. Cross off the twenty-third, that one was full. A lot of discussion came out of the superintendent's meeting, they were allowing four slots only for this, and it was impossible. You know, you want all your principals to be there, they're encouraging a board member to be there, you want your superintendent to be there. This is really, you know, we want our teacher union reps to be there, so they are now allowing six people to go, and we'll have to move it to a different date.
Say thirty-first?
We're looking at the thirty-first. There'll be three sessions, though, so I think right now, Rob is a maybe, if anyone else, I did send it out to you in email.
I just didn't know we changed.
And you were maybe as well, so. You know, this is just something we have to do. We have to create a system. If we don't, we go with exactly what the board gives us, or not the board, I'm sorry, MDE hands to us, and we certainly don't want to go that route at this one. Yes.
But she said to scratch out.
I know, but I don't think we have to, have we changed to the thirty-second? It's the twenty-second right now.
I would wait till tomorrow.
I'll email.
Yeah.
Don't forget, I didn't miss that email.
Yeah, pass the rest to you.
I'm just a little bit confused by what we're approving here, that the evaluation system, you're telling us we don't wanna get stuck with the MDE one, but essentially, this is what this is saying, isn't it?
I feel like this is an approval for us to go ahead with this principal and teacher evaluation system through SSC and for us to create our own. If we can adopt our own, the end product would be this board approving what we give you. When you approve that, that, if the state has one that's approved by your district, they will allow you to use that if it meets certain parameters. This'll take us many days of us sitting around working on it, but especially these three days, working on the intercalate details of what needs to go into this. It's a mandate that we have no way around.
But this will fit Cannon Falls, though?
We wanted to have Cannon Falls style with it, right? Exactly.
Okay. I'll make a motion.
I'll second. Motion by Rob, seconded by Pat. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That is carried.
We will want it to be one of you, you can't change. Whoever does it needs to stick with it for those three dates, so keep that in mind.
We're interchanging.
Item next. Certification of the preliminary levy, attachment G.
That will replace what you got out there, just because we sent it out Friday, it was supposed to definitely be updated. I'll take one of the best ones, right? So both Beth and I went to workshop to talk about the levy certification, but essentially, what needs to happen to be the preliminary data for the levy that goes on file with the state is generally certify maximum. And the reason for doing that is there are a lot of variables that have to coincide, the levy that can change, not the least of ADM, somebody's students they have, accounting for that, you know, excess and whatnot, debt service available. So what I had here, and there's a changes here in case you did happen to go through the document before you showed up, the big changes are in community ed and debt service. At the time, we printed on Friday that community ed levy wasn't completely set, and it showed us as a reduction of sixty-six percent, and that's not the case. We have that corrected now, and overall increase in community ed from last year will be just under one percent. In the general fund, the overall increase from last year is about two point three percent. And a large portion of that is some limitation adjustments that were made from previous years, essentially, if they go back and they get updated or correct data on student counts, and there's some adjustments plus and negative, and the net balance is about twelve thousand dollars of adjustments that they can levy for, and that's really the increase there, but two point three percent in the general fund. The OPEP debt service, there's really no change in that, and that's, again, the fund that we levy for to pay the debt on that OPEP bond. The big one, and we talked about it a few times in meetings priorly to this, is the debt service. And prior to this run right here, the debt service was collected at the amount that we needed to fulfill our debt payments, plus five percent. When they go out and collect for debt, they over levy on the theory that they're, some people don't pay their taxes, and you need to get at least a hundred percent to pay your debt. Historically, we've been pretty good at collecting that. There's a balance in our fund in debt service at the end of the year. I think we're gonna be able to do two hundred thousand dollar manual reduction in debt service, which would bring that increase in debt service down to seven percent. It was twenty-two percent. Overall levy increase would've been eleven and a half percent if we stuck with that for debt service. And it puts us at bare bones for what we need for debt service, but it doesn't give us that excess, so you can also say to the taxpayers that we're not doing anything excessive in our fund. But it is an increase, and part of that is just the way the payment structure was set up on the bonds. As one fell off, the principal interest payment came a bit higher, and that's just kinda the way that it was structured. So this is gonna increase anyway, and we did a two hundred thousand dollar reduction in the debt service last year anyway, so just for that gap, we're gonna increase. But, so seven percent puts the overall levy as an increase of about four point three percent. And again, preliminary numbers, some of the stuff will get adjusted, but what we need to do tonight is, I would recommend that you vote on the maximum levy. And that just gives you the authority then to levy for that total. If you stick yourself to a dollar, you're stuck for that. So if you're projecting, say, eleven hundred kids, and we get twelve hundred, we can't levy for that extra amount. You're really stuck at that levy, so the recommendation would be to levy at the maximum, certify maximum. If you have any questions inside the back, you can try to help me answer them. If I don't need an extra, don't levy.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve going out for the maximum levy.
I'll second that.
Motion by Pat, seconded by Kurt. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Six oh. G, approval of childcare leave according to the master-teacher agreement, Article ten, Section eight.
Self-explanatory.
Pretty much says we have an obligation to approve this.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Must be getting closer to me. Motion by Jerry, seconded by Brenda.
That would be more snappy, man.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Reports. I snapped off a quick email to some of you that we should have a work session.
Yep.
Just to kinda gather ourselves here at the end of the year and have some discussion. In particular, I think we should just see where we all are in that strategic plan. That would be one of the goals there. And we don't need to set a time so much, but we do have to get this listed for public information, correct, Lori? So I'm not sure if you'd like to just have me throw out a couple of dates to you at some point in time and see how they mesh and see how everything works. We don't have a location, nor do we have a date and time, but I kinda was hoping for the first part of October.
I think that'd be good for, 'cause I'd like, just for the strategic planning part of it anyways, Bob, it seems like the momentum's going, and now it's starting to die, and I don't want it to die, you know? And maybe with that, it's kinda a separate thing, but maybe we could get together as a, the committee could get together so we know how to present it to the board again.
I thought you guys had set a date at the last meeting, but I guess you didn't. We'll probably go with October fifteenth, it'd be like the best day for everybody, but...
For...
For the strategic plan, but I don't know if that's too late for your retreat then. It's a Tuesday.
Well, you know what, I think in particular, it'd be nice to know just where we are, you know? My conversation with Curtis, I don't want us to get too deep into the plan and not really have the board all up to date on just exactly what we might be approving. It's better to maybe look at it wherever you are in your phase, see how it plays out for the balance of the board. So...
What are you thinking for October, Bob?
Well, I'm not really thinking, you know, a couple of folks said I'm good on Tuesdays and Thursdays, for example. You know, Saturday. I have no social life, so Saturday would be this big adventure for me. Tuesdays or Thursdays, is there any? Is it legal for me to just throw out a couple of numbers to these people via email and see what return I can get on it? Let's do it that way, and then we'll ask you to post that.
Strategic plan will go October fifteenth at three thirty.
That's conference night.
Conference is at the only three.
Thank you. I'll find a date for that, thank you.
And if we set a date, is it possible for some of the people in the committee just to get together and just review? Just so, because it's been a while, I'd like to go get together and just say, "Okay, how are we gonna just present it to the board so we're clear and concise in presenting the information that you need?"
Well, we're due for another, I mean, the next, we're due for the next year.
I'm just saying, if it's gonna be early October, and October fifteenth, you know, it might not...
Could you meet informally, just to touch base with them?
Because then after the meeting, after the retreat, then you can go back to the committee.
Sure.
That'd be a good time then. What was discussed?
See, we have a retreat, we can go for it.
Well, I'll throw out an email and just maybe pin down a couple of dates, and we can move from there. And location?
Yep.
Let's stay in town, I hate to drive. Any other board reports?
Just, I had a phone call, maybe we should just touch on a little bit, just had a few phone calls on just the PLC and some questions as to just why it's at, you know, a half hour later in the morning, and the kids coming to school at that time. Some are talking about not being able to get their kids there, and how that ever came about, and why we're doing what we're doing.
Sure. I can address that. I haven't received any phone calls, which is unusual. Okay, and that's great. Here's the thought process. We went through cuts, and first we went for a referendum, and it failed. And we went for another referendum and failed. And with failed referendums mean cuts. And we did cut seventy-five thousand dollars, this board chose, you know, to go along with that, and we cut staff development. That doesn't mean that we can't stop educating our teachers and furthering their education and making them the best that they need to be for our kids. We still have to find a way to do that. We used to have four days off throughout the year. We now spread that out, and we know that PLCs are working because we see what it's doing to our test scores and all of those types of things. It allows our administrators to get in there and really focus on curriculum and instruction and what we need to do to make our teachers the best they can be. So I do feel bad if someone, you know, we buss a hundred percent of our students here. So I don't know why they'd be bringing their kids anyway, but they may have daycare issues and things like that. And Derek, especially at his building, has worked that out. We've done PLC late starts at the high school for over a year, and it's worked out beautifully. We've had really amazing results with that, well, with Cannon Kids. You know, we've worked that out. It's unfortunate, we had a no vote, and we still have to find a way to do these staff development and get that to our teachers. It's the best way that we can think of to do that. All HBL schools are either doing an early out or a late start. We test drove it at the high school, and it went so well. We still offer breakfast, we're still getting reimbursements that way. And if anything, the success of it and the morale that it's built with our teachers, you know, I feel unfortunate that I've got board members, I got a couple of calls on it, but it's really doing phenomenal things. We don't get science teachers that sit down and talk about science. And even on those long days, all you wanna do is sit there and grade your papers and get ready for conferences. You wanna get your gradebook done, because that's what those days feel like in your head. A PLC allows you twelve times a year to sit down with a fellow second grade teacher and talk about second grade material, or English department, talking about those things. I just, I guess I'll defend it till I'm blue in the face, that it's just a remarkable thing for our teachers to be able to do. And I encourage you, if you do get calls from anyone, to have them call me as well. I have a lot of data and research that I can send to them on, you know, why these are successful. And again, our kids are at least in school versus having all those days off throughout the year, which, again, is gonna cost a parent much more than a thirty-minute late start. So I would encourage you to get that information back to them. Is that fair?
Can I talk about our conversation?
Uh, remind me?
Elementary school?
Parking?
No. The late starts for the PLC, the alternative for folks that don't have a daycare?
Don't remember.
Cannon Kids?
Well, yeah, Cannon Kids, like she had mentioned, that is an option. Very, very cheap option, if you will, for that half an hour of time. Yeah, yeah, sorry. I do remember now. I've had a few conversations since then. No, but really, it's, you know, we're trying to accommodate, the last thing we wanna do is put parents out. But we do feel that the benefit to the students is tremendous in being able to have these professional conversations. And really, you know, I encourage you to stop by the elementary on the late start PLC day and see, you know, really diving into data and being able to look at those test scores or those assessment scores from, we just finished AMES web testing. We've got last year's MCA tests, that, we've got all that data in front of teachers. And giving them guided time to be able to really look at that and break apart that data so they can target those students that need help. It's really been, we only had one, and I'm excited. Very excited for this Wednesday, we've got some relevant data that we're really looking at because we just finished our AMES web testing, and I think the teachers are excited. You know, ultimately, it's gonna impact the students, but, you know, in terms of making it accommodable, does that work? To parents, we wanna make sure that they know that Cannon Kids is available in the mornings for very low cost. And ultimately, you know, if they can find daycare, there's bussing for them, so.
Thanks.
It's a good thing, though.
Same. Same people. Anybody else? Any other board members have anything?
I would mention that there's another concert at the auditorium on October twentieth, and it's Hayley Bonner. And she's a Minnesota native, I guess, she's lived in the Twin Cities area for, and she's a really great performer, and that's another fundraiser for the auditorium, for the lighting and sound equipment, so. I got an event right invitation, I'm not sure, but I would definitely recommend people to show up for that and get tickets.
Want me to go first?
October twentieth, Saturday night.
Concert's been exceptional.
Yeah, she's fantastic. She's gotten a lot of songwriter awards and things like that. Great singer, so.
Okay, let's move down to committee reports. Have we had any?
No, I missed.
We had a curriculum committee.
You did?
Meeting.
Apparently, a couple of our people missed. Okay, would you like to...
Just ahead of me.
I thought maybe you guys would, you would talk about it. I tried to present the curriculum and instruction report for approval, but I was given a little bit more work to do on it, so. That was the sole focus of it, so. We have another curriculum committee meeting next Monday at five o'clock, and hopefully, draft, the final draft will be approved at that meeting, so it can be approved at the October eighth meeting.
I will add.
So it can be submitted by October fifteenth.
Safety committee meeting isn't listed on here, but it's September twenty-eighth, so if you would like to come to that. Chief McCormick will be there, Dave, Jake, Tim, Derek, myself will be on that one. And Julie, you're on safety committee too, aren't you? September twenty-eighth, this Friday, seven thirty.
Where?
Here.
Seven thirty? Case Policy Committee has not met, so we'll jump past that, right?
Yes.
Curriculum Committee, we've been updated. Strategic planning, we just talked a little bit about it. You guys are gonna try to get together and cover some things. Advertising and marketing?
We're on hold till after the workshop.
We're on hold till after the workshop. Disugete Committee?
Next month.
Disugete. Okay, let's jump into the Disugete Report, then.
I'll just pass out this really quickly. We've got our science MCA scores are in. I'm very pleased with the progress in this area of testing. Some of the areas were well above the state average, so we're pretty excited about that. I had my first HBL superintendent meeting, kinda interesting, we always meet after...
meeting. Kind of interesting, we always meet after the ADs meet. So, depends on how well the ADs meet, how well our meeting goes. But we talked a lot about junior high football. As you're aware, we're going to start the new sections, and we're in the big section because we're still big enough to be in that section. But that means we're driving to a lot of the bigger schools, like Stewartville and Byron and Cassin and all of those schools. And so, a lot of discussion at the superintendents' meeting, what we're going to do with junior high football, keeping them close, keeping border battles alive and things like that. I'll keep you posted on that. Superintendents are now starting a PLC. We're going to do that ITV style. So, we're going to look at computer screens at each other. And it's going to be great. My fall conference with MSBA is October 1st and 2nd. The big thing is school finance and obviously how we're still kind of struggling through a lot of the state finance issues. I'm still cleaning up a lot of odds and ends with the transportation things from the start of the year. Things are really going a lot smoother now. Just a really huge thanks to Joel Walls. He has stepped into, you know, just an amazing, just done a great job. I'm really, I can't say enough about what he's done for us. I, like Josh said, went to Tom Melcher's legislative update. Not a lot of changes this year. It's the every other year kind of thing, but we did go to levy meetings and things like that. This Thursday, I'm speaking at the chamber for the State of School address. I've got a lot of those coming up with Rotary and Chamber and things like that. So, I'll be doing that. We are attending the, well, we've changed the date possibly now, the teacher and principal evaluation tools on October 22nd. Keep you updated on that. And I just kind of wanted to give you an update with our new mechanic. You're really doing a nice job. Stan Stroms hired him. We contracted that situation out, or that position out. And he's doing a really, really nice job. We've had a couple buses that are, you know, holding their own. But again, just kind of putting it out there, we are thin on buses. And when I say thin, our breath goes away when we hear on the radio, "I'm going to need a mechanic," because we don't have backup. So, please understand that we are going to have to have a serious conversation. And I think even at your retreat, maybe talk about, you know, that direction we're going with that because we are at our end. I put some dates down at the bottom. My fall conference coronation, if you can make it. I think our committee really likes it when they see board members there. October 3rd, I think Rob is going to be my liaison. Thank you for the interviews for transportation coordinator. Homecoming is the 5th, and Ratwood Law Seminar, I believe. Are the principals going with me on that? Maybe not. Okay. I will be attending a law seminar by myself. And then October 8th is our next quarter. That's all I have.
You've had a lot of conversations.
They're floating around. Your company, give me a few minutes.
Aren't you missing something else?
I'm pretty sure that one hasn't happened.
Are you missing something else on the 27th of September, though, that the superintendent's doing?
Mm-hmm.
In the evening?
That's this Thursday.
That's this Thursday.
Excuse me, that isn't for Channel 12.
Yep, it's for something else.
I am doing a chili judging. I am very proud for the United Way. I am going to eat all these kinds of chilies.
Over 30, they make.
And if you would, over 30. And if you would like to attend, it's at Treasure Island. I start at 4:30. The Red Wing Superintendent and many other area people are going to be there. And if I make it through, thank you, Rob, for bringing that up.
Lori really wanted it.
Well, this is the superintendent's report.
You're going to put this on Friday?
Home stretch, everyone. Item D, head of operations and maintenance, Dave?
Um, that's going to be going down to 12-hour days. A lot of stuff going on and then working on my theme out here, trying to get that all tied up and stuff like that. Hopefully by the end of this week, that'll be taken care of. Activity lights, everything is increasing activity. My friend had mentioned we do have a big concert in the auditorium coming up on October 20th. And I say, just as usual, I keep it going.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question about the lights in the parking lot on the two ends? Are there some action being taken on that? Because I've had neighborhood people ask me about that.
Yep. And I put another call into that. I have pressure at the end of the day. I'm waiting to hear back from them. So, get them repaired before it freezes. I had to go to another one. It's probably, but you seem to have fallen off. We have to get to the earth right now, so.
Okay. You followed up a couple of the lights in the parking lot, I guess, have been out for a year and a half or something.
That's exaggeration.
Principals reporting.
Derek? Sure. Real quickly, it's, you know, not 100 percent of the science scores, but just reporting for elementary, you know, the science test, the science MCA test, is an MCA III this past year, and it's a bandit test. What that means is it's a test that covers standards from kindergarten through fifth grade, taken in fifth grade at the, you know, most exits of most elementary buildings. You know, it's, it covers a lot. So, you know, it's a, it's a pretty intense test for kids to take. But our kids last year, last spring ended up with an 81 percent proficiency rate, which we had 16 kids that did not or partially met the standards of 83 total. So, you know, to have 67 students meet or exceed is really something to be, hang your hands on. So, that's a fantastic job. And hopefully we can continue that trend. Any questions about that? Nope, that's it.
Tim?
I've had a great start to the school year so far. Been in lots of classrooms. And I'm starting that official observation cycle tomorrow. My schedule looks like a Christmas tree right now with all the different colors on it. So, I have been, was I nominated? Or was I elected? Or was I arm-twisted?
Appointed.
Appointed. Yeah, I don't remember. I didn't have a lot of choice in this to be the admin rep to the HBL committee. So, I'll be starting to attend those meetings, what, next Wednesday?
Next, yeah, the 3rd.
Yep. So, PLCs are up and running. We had a really good first PLC meeting a couple of weeks ago. We've got our second PLC meeting coming up this Wednesday. And again, like Derek said, if you'd like to, if you'd like to sit in, or if you'd like to, you know, come up and have me give you a tour of some of the PLCs, I'd be more than happy to do that. And you can see some of the good work that those groups are doing. Our grad retake testing begins next week. And because of the nature of the tests, they're a little bit easier to get in and out of with this new testing company that the state is using. We'll be offering retake tests for both math and reading next, starting next week. I think we're going to end up having four sessions. And next week is homecoming, and it's going to be really, really busy next week. So, thank you.
C E. Up to 94 preschoolers in five different classes. So, 94 preschoolers, a good number for us. Wanted to talk a little bit about Lindsay Collins. At the last board meeting, we hired a teacher again for a bit that night she backed out. So, we interviewed Lindsay Collins on Thursday. We hired her that night. She started on the next Tuesday. She went from not having any idea she was going to be a teacher here to starting four days later. And she's done a great job. Kids love her, parents love her, too. This weekend, if you wanted to come up here, plenty of stuff going on. There's a WJV volleyball tournament on Saturday. JV tennis going on out here. Tackle football out here. Flag football down there. Lots of stuff going on this weekend. And a whole nother volleyball tournament on Sunday. So, lots of stuff going on. Couple sports off to good starts. Football's 3-1. Volleyball's 9-2. Tennis and cross country are very competitive as well. Couple cool things at community ed right now we're doing. Thanks to Julie, it's kind of her idea. Firecrackers, an adaptive cheerleading team. We've got three, two or three girls?
Three or four.
Three or four girls who have joined the firecrackers through community ed. They're part of the cheerleading team. They're through community ed, so we're going to add another school sport. And also, the Amity Spanish teacher intern who was here is in upper elementary Spanish class for the kids at elementary school next week.
C E.
Students report. Katie, it's been a while. How have you been?
Oh, I've been doing pretty good.
Summer good?
As good as it can be. A bit busy, but yeah. Just only three weeks into the school year. There's not a ton going on, but we're sort of gearing up with homecoming coming up next week. Middle school and high school picture day, so we now have a record of all the faces. Seventh and eighth grade volleyball teams, both got first at their tournaments this weekend. The junior class is working on their fundraiser for prom, which is, as opposed to selling magazine subscriptions, this year it's a 5K run-walk sort of fundraiser, which I think the deadline for that is actually this Thursday? 27. And then the 27th. And then I think the run is the next Friday. And I know they're all, they have like five different teams, and they're all doing some sort of competition for that. The Fall Musical is My Fair Lady. It'll be showing in early November with our new director, Jeanette Folks. And she, I've been working with her. She's absolute, I adore her. She's so much fun. She's really great. Debate team has had their topic released, and they are competing for the first time this Saturday. So, wishing them good luck. Football team, varsity football team won in what I was told is a nail-biting three points against the Crescent last Friday. The tennis team, I know, played Stewartville. The JV and varsity teams both went over to Stewartville this evening. So, wishing them luck. And then, I also would like to sort of give a preemptive introduction to Michael Wegman's replacement. His name is Ryan Foster. He's a junior. He's in a couple of my classes, and I've had the pleasure of knowing him fairly well. And I think that he will do a very good job, so.
All right. Thank you.
Why don't they have like half Ks?
Walked on the block.
I know, the kids have one K. There's a kid's one K.
That's what Anna's doing.
Upcoming meetings, the next regular board meeting is October 8th. And on that agenda will be so far the annual curriculum and instruction report. If for some reason you need any additions to that, or you'd like to know of any additions to that, or add anything, contact Beth or Lori, and we can get it taken care of. Public forum is next. If anyone wishes to speak on any school-related items, any items of particular concern, here's your opportunity. Okay. I would look for a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, mammal.
Motion by Pat.
We're still voting, right?
Kurt, Rob, do you have?
There's still discussion.
I think we, I mean, this is, we don't have to adjourn.
All in favor of adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?